Good morning, everybody. My name is Dr. Dagel Paige. You can just call me Dan or Daniel. I'm here on site at the Arm of Springfield Administrative Office or building. Today is March 28, 2025. I'm here to help document a special meeting in regard to an audio and video recording ban that is in place for residents at the Arm of Springfield. Now, on March 20th, 2025, Charter Advocates Canada had issued a letter to the Arm of Springfield saying that this ban may be deemed unconstitutional and will violate Section 2B rights of the residents, namely, the expressive ability to record and document or broadcast a meeting. Now, you might ask, Dan, why does this matter? Well, there's been a compounding number of issues in the Arm of Springfield, ranging from issues with minutes. So there's poor documentation many times of these meetings. And I've been observing and documenting this for a number of months. In fact, last night, I was here for a planning meeting, and in fact, minutes were incorrect there, too, upon approval. And that is involving a planning matter.
I'm confused about the process you're following tonight. I read in your minutes, your approved minutes of January 23rd, that a public hearing had been held and that the Chair had closed the evidentiary portion of the meeting. So the minutes are...
What happened at the January meeting? So nothing was opened up to the public for comments. So the public hearing did not take place in the respect that we heard from any of the public. Only the Development Officer read his report out, and then the applicant asked to defer.
Did the Chair not close the evidentiary portion of the meeting? That's in your minutes.
Yes, in January it did. And then this new hearing tonight was re-advertised like a new public hearing. So people still have the opportunity to speak tonight. So the public hearing is reopened...
You've closed the public evidentiary hearing. You've never allowed this before. Once it's been closed, that's the end of it. You can't change the rules, Colleen. It's... I mean, my suggestion to you right now is to go back to the audio and check if the minutes are correct. But if the minutes are correct, this hearing is substantially over, and you, council has to vote. The four members of council that were present have to vote on what was heard on the 23rd of January.
Because we've advertised the hearing as a new hearing tonight, my recommendation is that council can go ahead with this tonight, and we'll be hearing from any of the public that has anything to add at the hearing.
Well, there'll be a challenge, Colleen. You can't have two hearings on the same issue without a vote.
So my written notes in my book do not have that the Chair closed the evidentiary portion. It says the Development Officer read the report, and then council voted to defer the application at the request of the applicant. So we did not close the public hearings. So we can amend those minutes in the future and confirm that audio, but...
No, you can't proceed with this until you review the audio and you go through the process to amend your minutes. Like, this is a legal process. You can't... Like, the minutes are the written record. We've had a lot of discussion lately that this is what it is, and you are reporting verbatim what happens. And so if that happened, and I'm sorry for the applicant here, but there's this... This is a legal procedure under the Planning Act, and your minutes are clear. Now, I'm not saying they're not wrong, but to remedy that, then now you have to stop this hearing, review your audio, then go through a process to amend your minutes, and then resume the hearing, if that's the case. You can't just say that you can go ahead tonight. That would be unfair, because that... Any decision tonight would be subject to challenge.
So I did listen to the recording. So the Development Officer provided his report, and then the applicant asked to defer, and council agreed to defer. And the evidentiary portion of the hearing was not closed. So the minutes are inaccurate.
So it must be stressed that residents, should they not participate in meetings, they need reliable information and documentation of these meetings. And what happened was, on February 4th, 2025, a resident was trying to document, actually, one of my public delegations in the public chamber. And Mayor Patrick Tarian had targeted this resident, saying that she could not record.
As for the misinformation, it's rampant today. Social media apps allow people to say things on there, and some anonymously now, I understand, and often proliferate to misinformation. So it's a sign of the times there. Karen, are you videotaping this? You can't. You can't videotape this. It's in our procedural bylaw. So you have to put your cellphone down.
Could I ask for clarity from point of order?
Just one minute. Karen, are you videotaping this?
I'm watching something, yeah.
You have to put your cellphone down. You can't videotape in here. Whoa, I'm just talking to Karen. Karen, can you put it down, please? Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some clarity from the CEO. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some clarity from the CEO. Is the procedural bylaw prohibit people from using cellphones for videotaping?
You're required to have 48 hours in advance permission to videotape or audiotape meetings.
And how can we change that?
And that's for the media, though, isn't it?
Yes, that's exactly right.
And she's not media.
She's not media. So I don't think it applies to any resident, to be frank.
And on February 11th, it was communicated effectively that residents would not be allowed to record in the chamber.
And I just have to do a little bit of work here. No cellphones are allowed in the council chambers for videotaping. Please, cellphones unvibrate. And the hats off, please. So if that's all understood there, I've got the caller order made there. Mark?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order, Mr. Chair. I noticed you indicated that no cellphones are allowed to be in this chamber. I don't remember where you get that in these very specific reports.
It's in our procedural bylaw. It's only media. That is. It is. It is, Mark.
It's in Section 11, the 15, rather. The media may not video-record within two days' notice.
Yeah, and the public aren't to have videotapes. It's disruptive to the council here.
Do you understand law, Mr. Chair?
I don't take personal attacks lightly, but go ahead.
It's not a personal attack.
It is. It is.
It's for information, and it's for your knowledge.
My knowledge, okay.
Everything which is not prohibited is allowed. Allow. Everything is legal but default unless there are common laws or statutory provisions proclaiming it.
You sound like you're reading it. Are you reading for something?
I am, because I did research before I came to this meeting.
Okay.
And do you realize that in the law, you need to have prohibitions? You don't have to have requirements of what is allowed? We don't have a prohibition on video recording by public citizens. We have by the media, and that's allowed when they have two days' notice, but it has nothing to do with the public. And for you to incite or for you to put in your own laws is unjust and unright. It's not in the procedures bylaw.
Well, it is. It states there that only the media are allowed, and they have to have 48 hours' notice and have to be approved.
It doesn't say that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it does. I'm trying to find it.
The media may audio/video record it if they ask and seek permission two days in advance. Because it doesn't say the public. So don't read into the procedural bylaw something that's not there.
Well, we have for two and a half years now.
Because you've done it wrong for two and a half years doesn't make it right.
Well, it's... I understand the person who had videotaped the last time we were here. I guess this was online. I heard there was online. If we have 40 people with cellphones, it's just common sense. This is going to look like a concert hall here, lifting up cellphones. So there's disruptive there, and that's the way I interpret it there. And I don't think anybody would interpret it otherwise. I stand to reason. If somebody else has a comment there, that's the way we've interpreted since I've been here. So I don't see why it would be...
No, it isn't, Mr. Mayor. It's not... No, because I've always said we should allow the public to record at any time, because our procedures bylaw specifically does not prohibit the public. The media, it says, requires permission. It does not say the public. And don't pretend it doesn't. Just because you've done it wrong for two years doesn't make it right.
You've never objected at any other time until...
I have objected. You know I've objected very clearly.
No, you made comment about it, that we should change it. It's implicit in what you're saying there is that the public is not allowed to videotape. Otherwise, it's disruptive.
Unless the law... Do you not understand the law? You're a police officer for how many years? Do you not understand the law?
There we go. You're making it personal again.
You know how to enforce the law, but you don't know how to read the law, do you?
Oh, well, yeah, that's right. I only enforce the law. I never had to read it there. That makes sense.
Well, thank you for that clarity. So I challenge you, and I still stand that the public is allowed to record it.
No.
Yes, they are.
Totally disagree.
Show me where it says it isn't.
I just told you what it was.
You told me something that's not there.
Now, this is a compounding issue, as I said, ranging from the minutes to the push away or desistance, or perhaps even antagonistic behavior, or pushback against residents to participate, which is a key and important aspect of public governance.
Yeah, so the question would be to the Chair, who's busy writing. What two things can you pick out of Mr. Page's delegation?
I'm not going to answer that. You're just looking...
Thank you. You've just answered my question. You just...
A response.
Exactly. I'm looking for a response.
That's not a question. That's a comment.
I'm looking for a response. My question is, how many things... What did Mr. Page talk about?
I am not answering that, ma'am. I think you're out of line. You're trying to make a point with the audience. That's all you're trying to do.
No, I want to know. If you listen to the people who actually come up here...
And there's Mark Miller there laughing. What are you laughing about, Mark?
This is cutting into my time, sir.
What are you laughing about, Mark?
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point it out. You're being very inconvenient to the mayor right now, because he asked questions, because he was writing, and he constantly writing something, not listening to the people, what people are saying. And that's why we have this problem right now. Nobody listens. Council doesn't listen to the people. It's like redetermine everything. People come and talk and talk and talk, even procedural bylaws, anything. How many people in the last meeting and Googled "voice opposition"? They said, "Change this, please. Change this, please." Nothing is in it.
I've heard Mr. Fuel say that in the last two years, Question Period has degraded. There's a common denominator there. And he's sitting in that chair.
Please, sit down, ma'am.
That's true.
You need to change your tone of voice when you talk to the...
You have to be a little bit... You're rude. You're rude.
Mr. Mayor, that was very disrespectful.
That's enough. We've had a resident.
Point of order. Point of order.
Hey, time is up. 15 minutes is up. 15 minutes is up, ma'am.
Point of order. I would ask, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, that you apologize to Miss...
I will not apologize to Mrs. Sinclair. I will not apologize to her.
So what we're going to be doing here today is, I'm hoping that we'll be able to see what happens here today at the Arm of Springfield office. This meeting starts at 10:00 in the morning. And my hope is that we'll see freedom of expression is something that this council will appreciate and value, because this is not just something that belongs to a few. It's not a special interest, right? It is a right that belongs to every Canadian. Freedom of speech, freedom of expression, many of its different forms, is a key aspect of what makes a liberal democracy work in many societies. And my concern, ranging from the desistance to pushback to the elimination of public participation, is that once residents are targeted, or perhaps told that they're not allowed to document meetings, or they've been put into extreme lengths to document meetings, this creates communication gaps. And I've communicated this several times now to the Arm of Springfield council. And unfortunately, that has not been reciprocated very well. So my hope is that residents will understand that this is not just a small issue. This isn't one involving their rights, their freedom of expression rights. And again, this belongs to everybody. So what we're going to be doing here is, if I have anybody that wants to talk to me, they'll come talk to me. If not, we'll be seeing what happens here at the meeting today.
Thank you. We will start the meeting. This is the RM of Springfield meeting agenda for March 28th of 2025, a special meeting. And we're starting at 10:00 AM exactly. I'd like to introduce councillors. I am Mayor Patrick Tarian. Deputy Mayor Ward 1 is Glenn Fuel to my right. In descending order is Ward 2, Andy Kaczynski. Next is Ward 3, Councillor Mark Miller. Next is Ward 4, Councillor Melinda Warren. Then, if we're prepared to go, and we see that we are, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a mover and a seconder for the special meeting? Mover and a seconder? Mark and Andy?
Be it resolved that the special meeting agenda for March 28th be approved.
Additions to the agenda as written? And I see none. Can I get a show hands, adoption of the agenda? It's unanimous, and it is carried. We will get... We got two items on the agenda here. 4.1 is the public recordings of council and the committee of meetings and the public hearings there. I guess we'll get a mover and a seconder for that. Oh, okay. Sure, if you could take your hat off in the chambers as well, please? Thank you. Okay, why don't we start off? Then, this is a discussion amongst council here. Anybody like to lead us off? Mark?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and council, and for members of the public. Councillor Kaczynski and I called this special meeting because we think that there's a fundamental freedom of expression and right here for citizens, not only in our municipality, but fundamentally across Canada. And this is echoed by a letter by a group of authorities under the Charter Advocates Canada, who are in the legal field. But beyond that, I just first off want to say that we're thankful that the meeting has been called, and it needed to be called, because under procedures bylaw, it's required when any two councillors request a special meeting. It's absolutely essential and necessary. What I'm kind of disappointed in is we didn't really have an opportunity to decide when that meeting would take place. So here we are, Friday morning, when most people don't have the opportunity to participate. Despite the inclement weather, schools are cancelled right across our province. And those people who have children probably would have to stay home for that reason. Simple enough. Those people who have an 8:30 to 4:30 job cannot participate. If you remember, it's... The excuse might be said, "Well, they can Zoom in." But you know what? When they're on an hourly clock, they can't Zoom in, or they're dock paid. Today, and I know the role I took as councillor, I'm taking off time from work, from my day job, and that's fine. That's my responsibility to do that. I'm not arguing that fact. But what I am arguing is that Joe Citizen, that does have a regular nine-to-five job on a weekday, cannot be here today. And I echo that because I was... Several people have expressed to me their concern with how this chamber, since our election, has watered away, whittled away, and continued to erode democracy for the public. You know, we can show primary examples with that, with the exclusion and the elimination of Question Period. That was a fundamental opportunity for the public to engage with our council. That has been stripped away. It's taken away. One might say it's democracy. A majority of council supported that proposition. But I will not sit here and say that I supported it, because I didn't. The record will show Councillor Kaczynski was adamantly opposed to eliminating the opportunity for the public to speak before us. Prior to Question Period, years ago, Reeve, Budnerick, Skrupski, McCarthy, Holland, and I'm sure there's been others, allowed the public to engage throughout council meetings on point by point matters. We don't even have that any longer. We thought, I think a previous council thought, that taking that away may be more of a format to allow for a Question Period of 20 minutes or whatever was allowed to engage. And I think that was a good move. I think that was a smart move. What was wrong about that was that it was at the beginning of the agenda items, and so people couldn't speak throughout the agenda on particular topics and items. So we learned from that, that that wasn't really the most effective way to do things. But now, 2025, 2025, we've eliminated the public's ability to speak to council. And the argument is, you can call us, you can email us, you can text us. But you know what that is? That's called censorship. That's called muzzling. That's called suppressing information that could be publicly understood, shared, and dealt with. And so I echo with Councillor Kaczynski. I want to read very specifically what the Charter Advocates Canada has said. They just challenged... They just challenged the Prime Minister, the Parliament of Canada, about parroging parliament. This is not some flimsy, ad hoc, ridiculous organization that just picks on democracy. They are an organization made up of lawyers that actually are fighting for freedoms and freedom of expression. So if I may read this, I will. "March 20, 25th, from Darren Lang, and it's to the council, the regional municipality of Springfield. Dear Mayor and Councillors of the Arm of Springfield, regarding policy at public meetings of the Arm of Council. As you know from our previous correspondence, dated September 16th, 2024, Charter Advocates Canada is a charity and civil society organization registered with the Law Society of Ontario. Our purpose is to promote constitutional freedoms and human rights across Canada. CAC is dedicated to defending Canada's fundamental freedoms, including freedom of expression." Background here, they point out. Ms. Karen Inslee, who's in the audience today in the chamber, is a resident of Springfield, Manitoba, and attended a public meeting of the Arm of Springfield, February 4th, 2025. During the public meeting of the Arm Council, Ms. Inslee recorded a delegation in council chambers on her cellphone, cellular phone. Ms. Inslee was sitting quietly with her phone, pointed at council to record the proceedings. At some point, Mayor Tarian asked whether she was recording and asked her to stop. He stated that it was against the new bylaw rules of Procedure 2410. The CEO then added that bylaw 2410 permitted media to record meetings if they made arrangements with the CEO 48 hours prior to public meeting of RM Council. She also stated that RM Council would post audio recordings of the meetings within two days of the meeting, notwithstanding unforeseen circumstances. Mayor Tarian then added that it was simply fine for people watching remotely to record the Zoom broadcast. And here they go on to say, in bold points, "There is no authority under the bylaws or the municipal act to prohibit members of the public from recording meetings." Very, very bluntly and specifically. "As a statutory delegate, RM Council's powers must be grounded by the Act. The Act states a council may only act through resolution or bylaw." There is no bylaw... This is underlined. There is no bylaw which prohibits members of the public from recording public meetings of RM Council. So this is aside from their letter. Councillor Kaczynski and I saw that there was a notice outside this chamber door saying that recordings aren't permitted. Subsequent to that, Councillor Kaczynski asked the CEO to take down that inappropriate, unlawful notice. I see that it's no longer there. Thank you. "Section 1510 of the bylaw 2410 speaks to arrangements that media must undertake with CEO prior to public meetings. There may or may not be a good basis to have specific arrangements related to media attendance and recording. However, this does not speak to any parameters related to the public recording public meetings they attend. As Ms. Inslee's was only quietly sitting and recording the meeting on February 4th, 25, it cannot be said, nor was it alleged, that she was in any way disruptive or engaging in improper conduct contrary to Section 16 of bylaw 2410. Further, improper behavior must have legal standards. It must be behavior which disrupts RM Council meetings to the extent it negatively affects them. Otherwise, it would be a free-ranging power for the Chair to expel anyone acting in a way he or she dislikes. And never, never should that ever happen. The Chair cannot arbitrarily declare lawful activities prohibited absent a duly passed resolution or bylaw, as there is no bylaw or resolution currently prohibiting recording of public meetings, nor was there improper conduct. As a result, there is no authority to prohibit this otherwise legal exercise by a member of the public." My own comment, amen. "As the Manitoba Court of Appeal held regarding RM councils and bylaws, in a rule of the Law Society such as ours, attention is due. Process and fundamental rights can never be forgotten or taken for granted, and here we must emphasize that. Not our council, not the legislature of Manitoba, no democratically elected body can take these expressions of freedoms away, whether they want to or not. There's a Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and there's higher levels that we must be accountable to. RM's council duty to respect the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I can't believe... This is a side. I cannot believe that I'm sitting here and we have to deal with this. We should be dealing with fundamental local issues, whether it be the rec center or road conditions, or a whole host of things. And here now, we've elevated it to a national issue." Again, going back to the law, the letter. "If a bylaw or resolution were to exist now, or in the future, which completely bans the public from recording meetings, quote, 'it would be unconstitutional.'" That is truthful, in fact. Recording and broadcasting has been held to be expressive activity protected by Section 2B of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. "Government-owned property, which we are on, is often required to allow free expression on its premises so long as expression serves to enhance one, democratic discourse; two, truth-finding; and three, self-fulfillment. Recording a meeting of RM Council clearly supports all three purposes. A ban on recording diminishes these purposes rather than supporting them. RM Council meetings are by their virtue, or by their nature, sorry, public. The RM is a public institution, and when it holds a public meeting, the free engagement of residents with their RM is a fundamental component of democracy, where limitations must be carefully constructed to invite public engagement rather than to constrain it. Although the RM publishes its own recordings through its own processes, there is no reasonable basis to prevent the public from recording meetings, except where such activity is coupled with disruptive or improper conduct already prohibited. Furthermore, the Act highlights the importance of public..." nature of such meetings where it requires all meetings of council to be conducted in public, subject to limited exceptions. Just a few more paragraphs. RM Council meetings are not forums where witnesses testify, where quality of evidence could be impacted by public attending tenants' recordings, such as in a court proceeding. However, the importance of what takes place in an RM Council meeting is similar to a court proceeding where the public has a significant interest to know what takes place. It is perfectly reasonable for the public to obtain such information from the recordings published by the RM Council itself with all its limitations. And as you know, when we do have recordings, there's sometimes issues with muting, lack of video, technical difficulties. We saw that last night. We saw that last night where people on Zoom couldn't, well, again, it was because of perhaps error or technical difficulties. It wasn't intentional, but it becomes extinct from the, from the recordings, or by other attendees who may publish their own recordings to bring awareness to specific issues addressed at the RM meeting. If the mayor supports the public to record the council's own broadcast with its limitations, as he stated on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, then there is no reason that the public should not record the meeting directly unless the mayor's intention is to control publication of the meeting, subject to the limitations inherent in the council's publication of the meeting. So here's the conclusion. All actions of the RM Council must have legal authority in either the Act, bylaw, or resolution, so long as members of the public record in a non-disruptive manner, such as in Miss Inley's case, the RM Council and Chair have no legal basis to prohibit recordings at their meetings. We invite the RM Council to consider our concerns cautiously and to conduct meetings in a way respectful to Charter rights. We here in demand that the Chair forthwith cease denying Miss Inslee or any other resident who attends a public meeting in person from recording the meetings, so long as it is done in a non-disruptive manner. Yours truly, Charter Advocates of Canada. Again, this is a recent letter, just about a week old. And it's gaining national attention on media. And I'm sure if we don't do the right thing, we don't take the high bar on this, it'll gain national and perhaps international attention. We need to absolutely encourage transparency, openness, and engagement by the public always and forever. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Anybody else? Councillor Kozinski?
Yes. Not our phone, not at our end. I cannot hear Mr. Kozinski. Yes, I did not mute myself. I'm sorry. Okay, so I want to say that we as a council, when I was running for council, I never expected that we're gonna be fighting for the rights for the residents of this community. And the rights was trampled over and over again, and I think we have to put stop to it. And we should have more rights for our citizens, you know, because we're here representing our citizens. We're not representing ourselves. So I have small presentations here. As a council, we should be open and transparent as possible with the resident we represent. Some on council even campaigned for open, transparent, and accountable government. The subject of today's meeting is section fifteen ten of the procedural bylaw. Section fifteen ten is clear to me and that it does not restrict the public from recording meetings. Unfortunately, some council members, administration do not have the same understanding. The letter we are presented from the Charter Advocates should, should clearly clarify any confusion among council and administration. However, that is still not the case. Dr. Pagemaker requested for permission to record here today, and he was denied. And I don't know why. The Charter Advocate letter warned us that if a bylaw or resolution were to exist now or in the future, which completely bans the public from recording meetings, it would be unconstitutional. Dr. Page's denied request demonstrates that our bylaw does not, in effect, ban the public from recording. Also, Mayor Tarion ordering people in the audience not to record proceedings exceeding his authority because there is no restriction in the procedural bylaw that authorized him to do that. This is not in line with the Charter rights. I recommend we change this section fifteen ten of the procedural bylaw so that it does not violate the Charter rights. We would not want the Charter Advocate to decide or take action on this issue, which will lead to unnecessary legal fees which come out of the pocket of the hard-working Springfield ratepayers. Council, we should embrace the public rights and we should not fear an open and transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else before I sum it all up? Deputy Mayor?
So I'll speak towards the question period for a sec. I just want to reiterate that that's not true with what was said. We do have delegations. Members, residents can come forward with a delegation. We changed all that. We even have questions that can be answered through sending them in. So I believe everybody has opportunity to submit. As we noticed in the last few meetings, delegations aren't even filling up. We've had like one or two delegations. There's not eight delegations on every meeting. So again, if people want to come in as delegations, they're open. Having said that, going towards the media may, and again, I'll bring up fifteen point one zero. I believe that the public should be able to record, but they have to, again, do it in a proper way. We don't need every person in the, in the, in the, in the chamber taping with their cell phone. So again, there has to be ways of doing this properly. So I recommend on passing a resolution that on fifteen point one, that we state public and media may audio videotape meetings, proceedings, including public hearings, providing that the arrangements are made with the CAO at least two days, forty-eight hours prior to the meeting or public hearings. And I so move that motion.
Councillor? Okay, then I'll send this.
No, I get an opportunity.
Go ahead.
So I've done a lot of looking into all the stuff. And yes.
Melinda is muted.
You're muted, Melinda.
Sorry about that. So I've done a lot of research as well on this issue. And reading the, all the, all the information about recording in the public, and you're in a public area. You know, I've read all that, but it still comes back to Daniel Page may not want to be audiod or videoed. And honestly, if you're here in council chamber and you get permission, I'm okay with that. Because you still have to respect somebody else's privacy. And yes, they came to a meeting. They didn't come to a meeting to be on your video. And they came for information. People come to council chambers for information. That's why they come. And so I also looked at a couple different, well, not more than a couple, different municipalities out there. And West St. Paul allows people to, and the media, public and the media, to audio video with permission. East St. Paul also allows people with permission. The RM of Lactaboni does not allow. And unless you have a issue where you need to be audiod, like you need to have the audio. The city of Winnipeg does not allow you to audio in their gallery or video, sorry. So I am in agreement that, you know, if you're coming to council and you're videoing it for informational purposes, and it is, it is in factual, truthful information, I don't see the issue. I don't want to see people that just come to a council meeting. And you wonder why people don't come to a council meeting is because they don't, they may not want to have their face out there because they might not agree with you. So I would respect that person's ethical choice to not be, and we should all be understanding of people that don't want to be on your video. But if you come and you get permission a few days before that you're, that you're concerned and you want to video, I don't see the major issue. Just to, just to, you know, I don't want to see everybody there with their phones up. Be respectful. And that's all I'm asking. Because if, if somebody comes and they have their children in the audience, we have to respect that because you are not to audio or video, sorry, children without their parents' consent.
Glenn, did you make a resolution there? And you seconded it there, there? So then we could proceed with a resolution, but I have a narrative first. Like, everybody's had a turn except for myself. What, what I'll do here is because of the special meeting, I've got all my notes down here scrambled. We've been elected on council for two and a half years approximately, not till the last month, as cameras in chambers been an issue at all, at all. We as elected officials, question period and invocation in December of twenty twenty-four, we, we, we as elected officials turned it down past the resolution that question period was to be taken off procedural bylaw. There was a mention there about the national media disruptions and so on like that. It's, it's disruptions in, in the local governance has gotten totally out of hand. And cell phones, in my understanding, are a main portion with regards to that. We as elected officials have to respect the people's privacy. And let's not get anything wrong here. Today, this is all about question period, short and simple. So we as council have to move forward and we are consumed in putting out fires which slows our governance on major issues. Bylaws on our communities only are applicable to our eleven hundred square miles of our beautiful RM here. We as, we as, we as council take an oath to conduct ourselves in the best interests of the Royal Municipality of Springfield. Section fifteen ten of the procedural bylaw states media are allowed to record if forty-eight hours prior application is done. Again, we have adhered to this for two and a half years, but since December, now we have to interpret it or are being asked to interpret it otherwise. Are we to put everything possible, every variance, nuance when it comes to stating who media is there? To say it doesn't say this in short and sweet there, it's for good governance there to allow cell phones in here would be an absolute disruption. This is why I feel that having recordings is counterproductive and counterproductive to good governance. It's disruptive when you could have forty-three video cameras in the chambers at any one time, potentially forty-three. When a camera decorum will often deteriorate. We've seen it there when cameras are present there. When you exponentially increase that to forty-three, it's going to heighten everybody's, you know, sensitivities and arousal. I didn't sign up here nor anybody in the, the audience to be on YouTube, Facebook, or social media. Much like a crowd mentality, cameras change people and groups, people act in, in different ways. They can do so by recording off of Zoom. That's, I've said that repeatedly. The public are hesitant to attend chambers, especially if they have a different view from a group or people present. We want to attract people into the, the chambers here, not, we want to attract people that are not always present. We want to attract a wide variety of people into the, to the RM. Having people now have to worry about being on Facebook and social media to some, some person's website is counterproductive. To allow for a better environment, to bring people back, they should not have to worry about stuff like social media. I think councillor, deputy mayor has basically said other comments that are basically been repeated. If you give me one moment. Thank you. Councillor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to rebut what councillor Fuel said. He made allegations that people have the opportunity to speak as delegations.
Yes.
You did make that statement only moments ago. Dr. Daniel Page made a request to be a delegation today. He was denied. So you cannot say to me, no one can say that because we have question period, people can come as delegations, when there's an individual in our chamber specifically right now who is denied. Other people wanted to speak as delegations have come forward to me, but they said unfortunately, they did not have forty-eight hours' notice as required. So they're not able to participate. They're not able to share their concerns with council today. So the delegation approach, while I know councillor Fuel had good intention for it, it is ineffective. It's censoring the public. It's giving them the inability and prohibiting them to come forward to our council. Because often, often, and you know this, we get the agenda on Friday at four thirty or four o'clock. People actually have lives outside of this council chamber, and on the weekends, they probably don't stay tuned, and they don't at four thirty tune into the website of the RM of Springfield and say, oh yeah, this is on the agenda. And then all of a sudden, it comes about on Monday, and they don't have the opportunity, the forty-eight hours' notice to, to speak as a delegation. So that whole element of the procedures bylaw is ineffective. And it again is a mechanism where we've watered down the ability of the public to speak. I would love it. I would make a motion here and now. And I'm sure it would be seconded for the public to engage with us at this special meeting here today. So I will make that resolution as well. That the public have the opportunity to today speak to us as council on this emergency, very critical, national Charter of Rights, fundamental issue, to speak to us here and now. And I would need somebody to second that.
Can I just clarify? There was no request for a delegation that was denied for this meeting, so I'm not sure.
Well, I believe there was, and.
No, there was a request to record the meeting, not to come as a delegation. So if you could clarify that.
Okay, to, to go further then, I have had requests, but people knew they couldn't meet the forty-eight hours' notice. So regardless, people do not have the ability to speak to us. I'm giving them right now the opportunity to speak to us. What's wrong with that? Is this council not want to hear from the people? And just on the point of councillor Warren, just because others are doing it inappropriately or wrong, doesn't make it right. And you know what? Fundamentally, this is a public chamber. And do you realize that if you're in a public chamber, you're allowed to be video recorded? And if you bring your children in here, that is an authorization to allow that child to be video recorded? You don't need approval. Show me any specific evidence that shows that you cannot record in a public chamber. You can't do it. It's not possible because it doesn't exist, and it's against the freedoms of rights and the Charter. So we are, we are positioning ourselves. Whatever happens in your resolution, Mr. Councillor Fuel, this is going to go to a higher level, and it's becoming a national issue. It's not going to be smothered and dealt with. It's going to be raised up higher, 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 and make us look like goons.
Goons. Well, national, I don't, I don't quite understand. That's, that's just one lawyer company. That's one lawyer. We have, we have many lawyers that would. We have, we have many lawyers that would say otherwise, I. I was, wow. No, that's, this is just one, this is just, this is just one person's opinion, this is just one person's opinion.
It's a group of lawyers, where's your opinion?
It doesn't, it doesn't, this is one lawyer's opinion, you're you're putting everything, put your hand down, Mr. Page. This is just one lawyer's opinion there and there's other lawyers there, if this lawyer, this company here wants to make an issue about that. Tell them to take it to the, to the Manitoba Court of Appeals, make a King's Bench application. And then then go ahead, but this is, this is something that all RMs have to deal with. And a vast majority do not allow cameras in here and there's a reason for that, the vast majority do not allow question period. We are not doing anything wrong here, we're not quelling anybody, we're not stomping on anybody's rights. For you to be, you know, to to say stuff like that, that's that's being overly. I am talking, I am talking, to say, to say.
Excuse me, please stop interrupting in the chamber.
Stop just being disrespectful, okay, Mr. Akins. You are, I'm trying to talk here and you're trying to override me here. So, so the fact, the fact is, is that you got one lawyer company here. Why we're putting everything on this one, I don't understand this, we have got many different opinions on this. So to say that everything is is on one letter here is is beyond me, why why we're we're putting everything on this. This hasn't been tested in court, if they want to test this in court, please do so. But we're allowed on municipal act, we're required to have a procedural by law, we've addressed that. And there's not been an issue since question period was taken away, plain and simple. So let's handle the resolution there of Deputy Mayor first. Two, two resolutions, so let's handle the first one first.
He doesn't get it.
Councillor Miller.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know why you continue discredit Charter Advocates Canada.
I'm not discrediting him, I'm just saying, this is, this is just one lawyer company here.
Make note, he's not, he's interrupting me now. So he wants respect, but nobody else can have respect, right? This is how this guy acts, this is how our mayor conducts council meetings since day one. I'm frustrated, you can see my frustration. And you want us to. He did. He doesn't want people to see who he is.
Excuse me, can I just remind council that we do have a procedure by law and if I could read that. Members of the public may not interrupt any speaker or action of the council and behave in a disorderly manner. Manner including engaging in debate or conversation. That's clearly a rule on the table right now.
Respectful.
So I was speaking, Mr. Mayor. In terms of respect, well, obviously we don't have any of that, we haven't had it for a long time, you've called me names, you've done other. Intimidating kinds of things, I'm sick of it, I'm tired of it. And this is going to go to the human rights. This is, sorry, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, because now, now the public's. Has has drawn a wall, you've drawn a wall between you as an elected official and the public as the people out there. Who need to abide by every bloody law that we have and a new one that they want to institute today to even further restrict you. To even further restrict the public, how much erosion of democracy are we going to see in the next one and three quarters year until? You and I and others face the electorate. And judge you. This has been the notorious erosion. This has been. A legacy that is atrocious. For every member of this council, why are we seen in such a bad light because we're eroding the public's ability to engage and to democratically dialogue? They don't have that in other municipalities because frankly, people are allowed to dialogue and engage and. And have a good rapport, it's important for us to have a difference of opinion, that absolutely is true. But it is never ever right to go against the Charter of Rights and Freedoms or the public. And that's exactly the path, the roadway you're going. Do you not see that? The Charter of Rights and Freedoms was brought in by Prime Minister Pierre Trudeau to make sure that the people had the ability. To continuously dialogue with the elected officials. Not because your opinion is that people are disrespectful, you know what, people don't always like your opinion or mine. And they have the ability, they should have the right. To express their disappointment with councillor Miller, councillor Fuel, councillor. Warren, councillor Kaczynski and and Mayor Tarian. Absolutely, that's a fundamental.
That's enough, you're disruptive here. You know, what kind of an attitude is that? So let's do the resolution, let's do the resolution.
Fundamental rights of freedoms and people is. Is really what we're fighting for is Canada as a nation. We have the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which is unique within the democratic elected world. And for you and any member who's going to vote against the public to. To go against the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, I will stand firm, I'll go on social media, I'll go on national news, I'll go wherever it takes. To ensure the public in our municipality have a continued right to speak to us. This is how ridiculous it is. And this is where it's going.
Deputy Mayor.
I totally agree with you, they will have a right in in an organized matter and that's how it'll be done in my opinion and that's why I put through this motion, thank you.
Okay, can we have the resolution, the wording for the resolution?
So there is a resolution moved by councillor Fuel and seconded by councillor Warren. Be it resolved that by law twenty four dash ten, section fifteen point one zero. Be amended at the first available time. To the public and the media may audio videotape meeting proceedings. Including public hearings, providing that arrangements are made with the CAO at least two days forty eight hours prior to the meeting or public hearing.
With that resolution being read, those in support from council?
We can speak to the resolution first.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, this is another barrier to exclude the public, as councillor Fuel says, yes. It gives them the ability, but it puts up such barriers that people just won't do it, in fact, they'll, there'll be even less people who are. Intent to come to speak to council because they'll see it as some sort of a authoritarian type of an institution that prohibits and restricts and. And makes allegations and. And, Mr. Mayor, I just heard you say to Mr. Mackey that take your comments outside this chamber, so in other words, throwing out people is. The way that you're gonna, you did say it, it's on the record, but so this is the kind of attitude, why would I as a resident want to come to this chamber? If I was in your seat. An unelected official, I would say the heck with it, my, what's going to count is next election, when I throw. The people who have prohibited me and restricted me. Those are the people we're going to get out of this. This seat. And that's going to be a fundamental election priority. And it's going to be well, well presented. Those who support the public and those who put up barriers, restrictions and say, yes, you can come to to talk to us. But you have to meet all this criteria, and by the way, the CEO can say yes or no. So you don't even get past that poll. No, democracy's eroded, is gone, this is beyond belief.
Okay, we ready to vote then? With that resolution being read, maybe we'll read it again just for clarity there.
Okay, and I just want to clarify that the rules are quite clear that in the bylaw that council set under twenty four ten. On why delegations can be denied, so it's not just me being willy nilly. On when I deny delegation, so I just, I want that to be clear.
Thank you. Just. You're being disruptive, Mr. Akins.
Be it resolved that by law twenty four dash ten. Section fifteen point one zero be amended at the first available time. To the public and the media may audio videotape meeting proceedings, including public hearings, providing that arrangements are made with the CAO. At least two days forty eight hours prior to the meeting or public hearing.
Those in support of the reading as specified there, show hands. That'd be councillor Warren and Fuel. Those opposed. Mayor Tarian, Miller and Kaczynski. What do I, I'm going to read that again.
I'm gonna remind. So I'm just gonna remind council about public decorum at meetings.
Where are you going?
Don't worry about it, it's fine. I'm just going to remind the public what's written in the procedure by law regarding engaging in debate in the council chambers during a meeting.
That's. That's. This. The way it's it's written here, I'll say it again, be it resolved that the by law twenty four ten fifteen ten. Be amended that the public and the media be may audio videotape the meeting proceedings. Providing that arrangements are made with the CEO at least two days prior to that, so essentially allowing. People to to video and and audiotape and I'm I'm opposed to that.
That's not what you voted.
Second resolution.
I will read the second resolution and I hope councillor Miller is going to be here. Maybe we can ask him to come back.
Are you moving this resolution?
Yes, I will.
We have quorum, so the meeting can proceed.
You thank me. Yeah, I'm going to present the our resolution, be resolved that the council of rural municipality of Springfield approve section. Five point two ten. Of by law number twenty four ten, be amended to the public and the media may audio videotape. Or digitally recorded meeting proceedings, including public hearings.
Is that not just the resolution we already voted on? So can I get a copy of that, please? Thank you. Okay, seems like the same resolution to me, but I will read it out again, moved by councillor Kaczynski and seconded by councillor Miller. Be it resolved that council of the arm of Springfield approve section fifteen point one zero of by law number twenty four ten. Be amended to the public and media may audio videotape or digitally record meeting proceedings, including public hearings. Know what, sorry.
Hey, can I get a show of hands of those in support of that? That's councillor Miller and councillor Kaczynski. Those opposed. That's councillor Warren, councillor Fuel and Mayor Tarian.
Point of order, there was no debate on this discussion, I rule it the vote not.
We've been debating it.
It doesn't matter when, how long, you debate it when the resolution is made, Mr. Mayor, if you knew. If you knew Roberts Rules of Order, which you don't see, you're interrupting me, he's not again giving me the ability to speak, why is that that he interjects? Because he wants his point of view. It was unconstitutional, it was not according to Roberts Rules of Order and I know you're going to discredit it because you're going to say it's not. But you know what, there is procedure and any legislative body, elected body has to go by procedure, otherwise, again, it's a banana republic.
It is not, we we just voted on it there, what what was the the vote?
He doesn't, the mayor doesn't even know what he did wrong, call.
We just voted a second time here, what was the vote?
There was no discussion, so, okay, banana court.
We've been talking for the last hour on this. Did you get the vote there? The matter is defeated, it's the same resolution and this one is defeated. It is defeated. Go ahead, go ahead. It it is. Okay, you're you're being disruptive. The second resolution was the same as the first.
As they butcher the minutes, last night we saw that the minutes were inaccurate, wrong. And changed, so if this is the kind of municipality we work in. Shameful, absolutely shameful.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? We have. We have done four point two, we've been talking about four point one and four point two.
Four point one was dealt with, four point two isn't. Uh, this is, you know what, you sometimes you just came and get so frustrated, you say.
All right, go ahead. You've been talking about Charter Advocates the whole time here, Mark, now all of a sudden we're going to go back into Charter Advocates, you've been talking about four point one and four point two.
Mr. Mayor. Councillor Kaczynski and I made another motion that the public have the ability to speak at this meeting here and now. And why do you just evade it and say the meeting's done, because it's not in what you want to do?
Okay, well, let's, what's what's your wording there for the resolution, to have everybody talk as a delegation?
I think the CEO. Had that resolution and it's in a recording, I can't verbatim remember ten fifteen minutes ago what I said, but it was to the extent that. I move that the public have the ability to speak here and now to us regarding these issues. And that.
Okay, enough, this isn't a dialogue, this is just with council here. You need a lot of help.
See? He's mouthing back to the public, I think that's irresponsible and inappropriate.
Oh, whatever, Mark.
It's, and it's a code of conduct, I'm going to submit.
So I apologize councillor Kaczynski, do you have a motion on the floor that hasn't been voted on?
Enough, let us talk here and stop disrupting.
So council voted on that, it was defeated two to three, so now the second motion now is to allow the public.
But councillor Miller have a motion. To allow people, allow people to speak. And I second that, but kind of was lost. Nobody racked to it.
Okay, we'll do it now. Yeah, this is what we deal with, Mark. It is not, you make a comment and I can make a comment, so smarten up.
Disrespectful, I'm going to make that note to the Human Resources Department, disrespecting council, I'm getting tired of it, I'm frustrated by it. And I think it's insulting and demeaning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being so courteous, so respectful to your fellow council members. Shameful. Absolutely despicable.
So I'm just wondering, does council actually want to enforce their procedure by law on public decorum at meetings? Or just ignore that it exists?
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, we have a bylaw in place for a reason, I believe that that's what it should be.
So hopefully without being interrupted, I can read the motion that's on the table, ready to be voted on.
Please do.
Moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Kaczynski, be it resolved that the public be allowed to speak about the agenda items on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Those in support. Councillors Miller and Kaczynski, those opposed. Councillors Warren, Fuel and Tarian, so denied. So that should be it there. Is there any other motions that we're not aware of? There was none? Then I get a mover and a seconder to adjourn, please. Councillors Kaczynski and Fuel. And matters adjourned at 10:54, thank you.
Record will show, that's the good news.